Just turn on, everyone needs to turn on and make sure their mics are on.
Yep. Maybe even tested them.
All right. It is my pleasure to call to order the meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. It is Wednesday, November 2nd, a couple of minutes after 6:00. Thanks to everyone for being here. Item number one, as always, information exchange. We have an update on the downtown vision plan implementation. Caroline, you want to?
Sure. So in October, the Freeport Town Council hosted a community workshop to give an update on the implementation of the downtown Freeport vision. There has been a downtown vision implementation task force that's been meeting regularly since the plan was introduced in May and had kind of narrowed down a list of 20 things based upon input from various stakeholders, boards and committees for priorities. So they have about 20 priorities that all link to the guiding principles that were identified in the vision. So we had a good interactive community workshop with some stations and some public comment. Some of you were there, so I'll point to you to share your thoughts. So you kind of got to go around to, we had, I will say, we had an amazing turnout. We were shocked. We probably had about 100 people.
Wow.
We were a little bit off guard.
It was crowded, for sure.
We had these workstations, but because of the good turnout, it was a little bit hard to maneuver, but you could go to like the stations and talk to different members and see why things were on the list. You know, Sam was there representing some things that were kind of flagged by the planning board. And then we just had kind of like a Q and A or a public comment with the council. The council hasn't really met much since then. They had one meeting. Now they're waiting for elections. They'll have the organizational meeting, but my understanding is in December, the council will look at that list of goals and priorities and acknowledge, endorse, accept somehow so that we can kind of focus on what things we want to be working on. I'll say from the planning board perspective, some things were flagged and you've already been working on it. You know, some things are going to be easy, just complete a project in one step, and other things like parking are going to be incremental. You've already done one step, but will take a little bit longer. Andy and Sam were there. Do you guys have any comments to share on things you heard at the meeting?
I thought it went well. I thought people were pretty positive about it. I mean, I didn't go around the different stations. I just sort of talked to people in the back that were there and what their impressions were. I thought a lot of people were pretty happy with what was going on, you know? Some people had some issues with parking, you know, but.
Yeah, it sounds.
Everybody's got an idea.
Everybody always has issues with parking, which is totally, and which is not to say that they shouldn't or that they should, yeah, I think it's.
I shouldn't say issues, they had comments.
Comments, yeah.
Yeah.
Lots to share.
Yeah. Yeah, I definitely heard, heard quite a bit about parking from some folks who were concerned that the board is moving too quickly to reduce parking and that, sort of a, maybe a slightly different spin on the member of the public who came, whose name I do not remember, who wanted us to take into consideration the fact that a lot of families still rely on two cars. And she was very.
Kathleen, maybe?
Yeah, Kathleen Mead, I think.
Kathleen, yeah.
She lives up by Gupta Lab up there somewhere.
Yes, yep. So she, I heard sort of some strains from that thought a couple of times from a couple of different people that, you know, the, you know, the parking is a precious resource in town, and once it's gone, you're not going to get it back, and the developers are going to come begging for structured parking at the town's expense in the future. And I think it's a valid perspective, certainly, a point of view. It's not something that I, I certainly don't want to see that be an issue, you know, that, obviously, I, you know, I don't want to run out of parking. I think Freeport's free parking is a great asset to the town. Parking is very complicated. I also don't think that we're moving too quickly. I think that, you know, we have a lot of parking in town, and that's been pretty consistent. You know, a lot of people feel that way, and I think hopefully it'll, you know, and I think we can certainly take actions or some future board can take action if things do start to get dire on the parking front, and we've acknowledged as much. So the other, another thing I heard about is communication from, you know, about things happening in town, you know, where, like where agenda, agendas are posted, where, you know, minutes are posted, where, how, basically how people find out what's happening in town and how they can be a part of the process, which I think is something that we've heard from, you know, people before as well, that it is, it can be hard to kind of, you know, go in and find the agenda for an upcoming meeting or see, I don't know, find the minutes or find the video or whatever. I think some of that's probably just for certain folks in town, it's perfectly easy to go on the website and figure it out, and for other people, maybe it's buried behind a couple of menus that are, or they don't use the internet at all or a computer, whatever it is. I do think it's worth, and I don't know if it's in the purview of this board, but at some point, I don't know, I'd love to hear some ideas if people have ideas about how to, and maybe it's, it's not just the planning board, it's probably all boards, like how do we, how do we have a point, or how do we publicize the way to get this information and so that people in town understand, like, okay, if I want the next project review board meeting agenda, or if I want to know what project in town that I've been hearing about, where it is in the process, what the next steps are, like where do I go to get that information?
So at the council level, there was talk during the last budget season about the need for some, I'd say consistency, because, you know, all boards and committees have stuff they posted their own way, and there was some talk about some desire, interest in having a communications person for the town of Freeport, which ultimately didn't get put in the budget. I've heard some more about that. As far as like website and posting, you're looking at the planning department webmaster is right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Each department's responsible for their own, so we've tried to do some consistency, but it is really hard.
Right, and the way, I mean, the internet is not getting any less complicated as time goes on, so I recognize that it's not, you know?
And it's getting, I think, as we add more projects, like we've been debating, like, do we have another website? But then it's like, we have two people and it's hard to maintain, and so we're trying to put stuff on our website, but even that is, is kind of hard, because like you said, there's a lot of, a lot of clicks sometimes. One thing we were talking about today is that, you know, we do a lot of notification, and you guys have a very specific policy, but like it notifies people at the beginning and not at the end. We do have that regular email list, which just basically notifies people, hey, there's another agenda you might want to look at. We probably have over 100 people now that subscribe to that, but most of our municipal communication is through municipal buildings, the website, some on cable TV. And then based upon a lot of what you guys do for state law, we still have to do our legal notices in the newspaper of general circulation, which means printed and mailable, so Times Record or Press Herald.
What about the Freeport Economic Development, uh, sorry? Their website, can you, you know, could they, I mean, their, their, do they have anything on the downtown vision plan? Do they talk?
I don't know. I think they were rebranding. That's a really good question.
It'd be really nice if we could put links to, you know, here's, here's what we're talking about, links to the different, to every month.
I mean, I'm envisioning like, you know, FreeportBoardMeetings.com, you know, like, you go and it's like, all right, project review board, like projects in pro, I don't know, but, but then of course, you know, it doesn't take much, you know, progress down that thought experiment to, well, yeah, that's a ton of work for somebody to be maintaining.
Yeah, I guess that, only two factors that come into play, like, I think if anyone has ideas, we're always welcome to them. Some of them, like, if we want to start running ads, then we need to increase our budget or our workload, or.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not, there's no silver magic bullet.
Does anybody here know why we never developed the cable TV show? I was appointed to the cable TV committee years ago, and I don't think we've had more than one meeting since.
I didn't even know it was a committee.
I don't know. They had been doing stuff, they're televising our meeting for us tonight. They televised the workshop and made a video out of that. We did put, at one point, I don't know if they're putting whole agendas, because putting whole agendas broken up over a whole bunch of PowerPoint slides, so you can read them, isn't always effective, but they were doing, you know, meeting notices, planning board meeting, whenever. But I don't know if there's more we could do there, but Tom, if you heard that, we're welcome to ideas.
Your towns were pretty much full-time cable TV, you know?
Yep, yeah, we do have a full-time person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Actually, one of the people who talked about communication said, the only, the only way I ever know what's happening is the planning board is if I accidentally happen upon a planning board meeting on cable TV. So I don't, Gary, I think, Gary, if you're watching, here we are. It's the first Wednesday of the month. And maybe, yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
They put them on YouTube as well. Yeah, during, we were streaming them during the pandemic on Facebook, but I think that kind of got more complicated as we went hybrid.
Yeah.
So one of my lifelong complaints with Freeport notification is I pick up the forecaster. I don't have a TV. I'm not real techie. I don't watch stuff on the computer, but I can pick up the forecaster, which is free. It's distributed pretty much everywhere. I can read what Yama's doing, Cumberland's doing, North Yama's doing, what the budget meeting is, what the agenda is, and it's been my perennial complaint since the 80s, that Freeport has had an institutional system where they never wanted to give notice. And I fought it and fought it and fought it, and I sort of gave up. Because it just didn't seem to happen.
And that's a forecaster, which is.
Part of the Portland paper, but it's free. It's just free down the shores, it's free everywhere you go.
Yep.
And they distribute locally, you know?
So we couldn't really use that for legal notification. It doesn't meet the legal requirements, but we, I think there's two things. It could be more of a townwide discussion that you could talk about with your annual workshop, or we could have one boarding committee saying, you know, running an ad, planning board meeting, first Wednesday of the month.
Yeah.
Generic, we just have to put funding in our budget for it.
Okay, so Times Record doesn't meet, okay, that's interesting. So, yeah.
Times Record meets our.
We've talked about this before, it's coming back to me, but.
Hearing obligations, but it's something we could definitely talk about on a future agenda.
But Times Record is a paid subscription one, correct?
Right, and it can be sent as first-class postal matter, so if you live in Florida, for example, you can get that.
You can get the Times Record.
You could read a public hearing notice where you're not, the forecaster won't mail it, so there's a specific definition.
I'm just wondering, does the forecaster cost us money? Is that part of the Portland paper system stuff?
We have to pay to put an ad in there. Yeah, it's like even for a little ad, it's usually like a couple hundred dollars.
That's, that's.
If we did like something really small, we could, there's ways you could make it more economical.
So, yeah, it's, it seems like an example of the, the letter of the law.
Well, I realize that has to be.
Being at odds with the.
But I think he's not saying for like, I think there's two things, there's like legal public hearing, which you're going to have to put on the table, and then there's a, hey, come, we're waiting, like the first Wednesday, which.
I just noticed when I pick up the paper, you can be a good, you know, just, I can get down through and I can say, okay, I'm down the shores, I'm shopping, saving, I pick up the forecast, and people go by and grab them, and there's a bunch of legal notices in the back, and I'm going, wow, I can read every other town around except my own.
Yeah.
And like, why is that? And like I say, I didn't know what the price was, but you know, they have the budget, I mean, they have the description of what's going to happen at the meeting, you know, they got a little block there with.
Yeah, so maybe that's something to flag for a workshop at the town council and say, hey, we're hearing this from a lot of people over a lot of time. Maybe it's worth throwing some money into.
Maybe that's why, I mean, I know a lot of people watch at home, but maybe that's why there's nobody out here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's possible.
Yeah. All right, last quick thing I had on my sort of notes from the workshop, people talking was building height. I heard people concerned about the building height downtown, so.
Current standard, too small, not big enough, or three, so in the VC one, it's three stories, up to 45 feet in height.
Yep, and I think people are feeling like 45 feet is a lot of building. I know we, we had a graphic at some, because it does depend on how it's, you know, it depends on which side of the street it's on, right?
Yeah, you go out, like, so you take that building and you go out 20 feet and you measure the average height and elevation, and then you take an average, so it's not just ground up, and we do, I actually have that elevation if you want to see it, but yeah, it shows different.
So it's sort of like on the west side of the street, you could, I mean, but like, how tall is Bean? I mean, it's probably.
I don't know how.
There's parts of it that are.
Again, like ground up, I don't know. For example, there's two projects going on, I can't think, they both meet the height, I can't think of what the height the one down there is, but the one that's proposed up here, I think is actually under 35 feet, it's under the.
Yeah, I mean, three stories, I would think most, most people, building, three-story buildings, it's not really, you don't necessarily want whatever that is, 13-foot ceilings on every floor, so, well, I'm sure some people do, but anyway. So that was the last thing, just to kind of let you guys know what I heard, listening to people at the workshop.
Lynn Rose Mary, were you at the workshop? I couldn't remember.
No.
Okay, I knew you were at a lot of that.
Mitch was there, so maybe, maybe next month Mitch will have some, some additional things to add. Somebody probably not, I doubt I'll remember that, but maybe, we can hope. Item number two, update on review of items reviewed by the project review board.
So here, I just found this drawing, this is what you were talking about, just for fun. This is what, is this what you were talking about? We looked at like once before.
Yeah, yeah.
This was from another project, so this building here, which was, God, I'm going to date myself, the old Cole-Hahn currently under armor. Look, this is not how we calculate building height, because we calculate it differently. We do all four sides and go 20 feet out, but this building's 48 and a half feet, ground up, this one's 40, this infill building, which they didn't build, was 38, this two-story flat one is just under 25. And then this is just a really, that's just really interesting, because we do have such a big gray drop between Main Street and Depot Street, that the back of these buildings are 35 on the side, and then actually where they were going to infill this would have been 48. But again, the overall height, when you take the averages, brings it down lower, so you do have buildings, we talked about the Hilton Garden Inn as another example, like ground up, it's like 40 feet, I think, but it still meets the calculation for the 35 feet.
Yeah, and I know we talked about that, and I don't want to.
Yeah, no, it's, people do, I think, find it kind of.
Right.
Interesting, but project review has been pretty busy. They had a couple of applications, I'm cheating, looking at the agenda, for design review certificates. They did have another shoreline stabilization application. That's something that was getting reviewed by the code enforcement officer, so in this case, people have unstable shoreline, they wanted to riprap it or do other methods to stabilize it, so now, as required under state law, they have to come to a project review. Shoreline zoning is really complicated, as you know, it's this whole ordinance with all these pages. I think after the first, they were reviewed, they've also done two stream crossings. There has been some questions to me as that, you know, would DEP maybe ever let it go to staff review board instead of project review board? They felt like that could be more appropriate.
Very technical.
It is very technical, and there's actually like of the 24 or so standards, a lot of them are NA, but there's a couple that apply, like vegetation removal, the stabilization, water quality, things like that, that are pretty detailed. So I think as we start to use that shoreline zoning ordinance at the project review board level, when we have a workshop with them or at some point, I think you might see something sent back to, to be like, hey, is this something that we can pursue changing or try to see if, we'd want, we'd have to make sure that DEP's open to it, because DEP has to approve any changes, but just to kind of give you a heads up, as we're using it, we're finding some things that I think they feel like could be better, if would be allowed. The Mass Landing LLC, which is actually formerly known as Divine Capital or the Crosstree Apartments on Desert Road, they came back as they were building, they had some after-the-fact site palin and building modifications, so they came back to the board. They actually had a decrease of like 4,000 square feet in impervious area, based upon the way the ordinance is written, and even under the new thresholds that we'll talk about tonight, it was well beyond staff approval ability. And then one thing that we also talked about at the vision implementation meeting is that the town of Freeport just received a grant for some improvements at town hall. The rest of it will be funded through municipal budgets, but they came and got site plan approval for some site plan improvements out here. There'll be some stormwater, some drainage, they're going to remove the steps, they're actually going to make an accessible path through the site to the parking lot, and there'll be ramps coming to this entrance on the building and also the side entrance. And then they'll be doing some parking lot improvements and putting a couple of parallel spaces as you come in the driveway, which actually was something showed on the original site plan, I think, back in the 80s. So I don't think we'll see that start until spring at this point, but they did get approval for some projects here. One of the other things that goes along with that is a small area for like public art display, and they're going to have some like stone wall seating out here, so someone could activate the area with a small performance or, you know, some kind of activity out there, and people could have seating.
They're going to do away with these steps out front?
Yep, it's going to be a ramp that comes right up here, so it's accessible, so somebody that needs assistance or mobility issues getting into the building can come right up, and there'll be no stairs on both entrances. And the ramp will go away over, well, not go away, it will change over there, so you'll be able to come right up. It will be filled here, because they do have to raise the grade a little bit, if you go out there, it's kind of sunk down, so it will be a change.
All right. Anyone else, information to exchange? All right. Item number two, approval of the minutes from the August 3rd and September 8th meetings.
28th.
28th, sorry. August 3rd and September 28th. Any questions, comments on these minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the August 3rd? Was anybody, first of all, anybody not here on August 3rd? Is that the one that everyone was here for? That's right. So like the first sentence, wasn't it, that I noted that everybody was there? Do I hear a motion to approve August 3rd as written?
Okay.
All right. Wayne and Andrew, all in favor? Excellent. I don't know if, Wayne, did you vote in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay. Just for the record. Great. And September 28th, I was not here. Robert ran the meeting, Anna, I don't think you were there either, right? So we do have a quorum, too.
What do you want to do?
Oh, we do not have a quorum to approve those.
So we're going to table that.
Wait. Are you sure? You were in a, yeah, yeah. This was the special meeting. Okay, so we do have a quorum. Do I hear a motion to approve the September 28th meeting notes as written? So Robert makes a motion, Wayne second, all in favor. Four folks here are in favor.
So who recused, Anna and Sam?
Me, yep. All right. Item number three, continued discussion on appropriate zoning districts and performance standards for possible new cannabis use, again, not retail. Zoning districts currently being considered for the possible new cannabis use are MDA and MDB, C1, C3, C4, the VC3, I1 and I2.
So we have Cecilia here tonight, she's going to walk you through. So we made some changes to this language based upon your discussion at the last meeting. We had a pretty detailed review by the town attorney. If you make any additional changes tonight or want us to look at anything, we'll do that. If you're pretty much good to go, the plan is that we would send this to the town attorney. They're going to do final detailed legal review and should be able to get it turned around, so that if you wanted to do a public hearing in December, we could. Based upon your notification policy, we would have to notify everyone in all of these zones and anyone that directly abuts, so I would say, if you want to do that, we'll want to check people's schedules to make sure that, I mean, things happen, we get it, and there's, you know, still a pandemic, but we want to make sure we can have at least, hopefully, a quorum of the board here. I did get one public inquiry, someone had a question as to if we have to allow the cannabis or if we don't, and, you know, where you might be allowing it. I think we've been talking about this for a long time, and so it might be hard for some of your viewers, which you do have, so we're talking, so I think if you don't mind, it'd just, it'd be helpful.
Did a Freeport team win something?
Somebody, I was just going to say, somebody must have just won something, because.
Congratulations to the team that just won, I don't know anything about it, but there's quite a celebration going on outside, yeah. Yeah, right. I think I heard cheering before the sirens, though, so.
I think they're going the wrong way. So I think if you don't mind, if we could just have Cecilia take, after the sirens are done, take a minute and just refresh for the public what uses we're talking about and where, at a very brief level, you're looking at. The biggest change she'll walk you through tonight is new language pertaining to caregivers, and I think the parade's almost done.
Wow.
Yes, that's great. That's usually like state champ, or division championship kind of thing, right?
Yeah, I think they're in state and regionals now, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Not sport, though, I'm trying to think of like.
Soccer, field hockey, football, isn't it?
Yeah, I know soccer had, soccer had some regionals. No, I think cross-country already won in Freeport.
All right. Quiet enough, right? Cecilia?
So for those of you who are tuning in, perhaps at home, so the reason why we're here discussing this item today is because the town council has given the planning board the direction to consider developing land uses to allow both cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facilities in the town of Freeport. The planning board has agreed that, come to the conclusion that 1,000 feet is a good separation requirement from schools and licensed childcare facilities, and that we're going to limit the cultivation facilities to indoors only, so that there's no outdoor cultivation facilities, and that we were going to regulate it as a, similarly to how we regulate manufacturing and processing uses, including those zones, which are the medium-density A, medium-density B, commercial district 1, commercial district 3, commercial district 4, commercial, I mean, village commercial district 3, industrial district 1, and industrial district 2. Those are the zones that allow manufacturing and processing. There is another zone, which was the village commercial one, but that allows certain amount of manufacturing and processing, but it has to be related to retail uses, and because the town of Freeport is not considering allowing retail stores, we're not considering that zone. In addition, in the last meeting, we discussed having, adding as part of the performance standards, another separation requirement of 100 feet from, not the property line, but from the cultivation facility to a residential building, so that would, you know, kind of prevent future issues with orders. We, as Caroline mentioned, the major changes that we have from the last draft to this draft was some revision from the town attorneys, and they added a lot of language here, so a lot of language, because in the past, I didn't address the caregivers, and caregivers is a whole other thing, and I was mostly focused on the adult-use cannabis establishments. So we are a little restricted in how much we can regulate the caregivers, so the language that we have here, we are regulating them in the sense that we are attaching, as defined, the caregivers to, as a home occupation, so that's as far as we're going to regulate them. But they're already probably operating in town regardless, because the state kind of preempts the municipalities on those.
So just to clarify, the caregivers are typically smaller scale, they can have up to 30 mature plants, and like Cecilia said, they have rights, municipalities have to allow them, they can't have a cap, you can have some restrictions, but not so many restrictions that you're prohibiting them incidentally or creating a cap. They, some of the, what they do is confidential, like if we have issues, the code enforcement officer can request where they are, but they're permitted today, they could be operating throughout Freeport, and we just don't know that, because they're allowed to. The draft we have here, kind of as a starting point, was to allow them as a home occupation with some adjustments to the language, as we would for any other use someone wants to do in their home. If you were a licensed caregiver not operating out of your home, then you're going to fall into one of the two categories that you guys are regulating that you have already talked about. If that makes sense.
Yep.
So. We can go over the ordinance if it helps. Unfortunately, we ended up with a lot more definitions than I ever wished for, but.
Yeah. I feel like most of the definitions are pretty, I mean, I like the fact that it just references the state statute, and, you know, if those are updated or amended, then, you know, we don't have to do anything, it's just a, I guess, I mean, if the number changes, how does that work? Like if they, if the state updates something and changes, or would they not ever do that? Like change, like so that the reference, you know, 22 MRSA.
Yeah, they can become out of date, like if the state omit something or add stuff, they could, would have, I mean, that's kind of like an ongoing maintenance thing we'd have to do.
But it's still probably easier than if we actually had a definition that became out of compliance with state law, so it's easier to reference, so. Yeah, I, I sort of feel like we may be more efficient if we just put it to question, questions the board has on any of the new language, is that all right, rather than going through the whole thing? Are there specific, I would ask you, Cecilia, if there are specific things that you want to highlight, I think that, that might be, maybe that's a good starting point, just like high, high points from the.
High points, okay.
From the legal review, other than the home occupation that we've been over.
Yeah, so with the home occupation, you know, there are some, we had, we did have Yeah, so with the home occupation, you know, there are some, we had, we did have to exempt them. That was the language that the attorneys mostly worked on. I didn't have that. But, um, so they do put some exemptions so, to make sure that we're not over-regulating them. For example, we have a percentage of how much of your home can be for that, and we didn't want to limit that because they can have up to 500 square feet or the 30 mature plants. So we, they're exempted from some of the standards of the home occupation, so.
Yeah, that was, actually, that's good. That was one of my questions. So it's exempted from Freeport's occupations, but it's regulated at the state level that they can only have 30 plants or up to 500 square feet. So it's actually a lower standard than they would be under within the Freeport. I mean, a more restrictive standard, I guess, is, than they would be under in the town, right?
Well, I don't know if they could fit, I believe our home occupation ordinance.
Goes up to 600 square feet.
I'm not sure if the state has a square footage limit. The reason they kind of exempted it is because the definition references plant, mature plants, 30 mature plants.
All right, so, yeah, if you wanna spread them out through your, throughout your whole.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I haven't, the attorney didn't mention the 500. Cecilia might know more than me.
I thought that was on their presentation, so that's kind of where I remember it from.
It's always changing, too, so.
But either way, home occupation is, is, is.
Is our ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, so by definition, so like the definitions, I was a little thrown back by it, but like you have to read them together a couple of times, and you're like, aha, I get what they did. So that's, you know, what Amy and Grady really worked on those. So basically, you know, you can home cultivate for personal use. We're like exempting that from everything because we can't really do that. But we're addressing it on the definitions to be explicit about that, including on that first section, that 200, you know, 201 general restrictions. So we're saying that cannabis home cultivation is, you know, we're not really restricting that. With the home occupations, that section 503, it's on page 32, it does look like where no home occupation may utilize more than 25% of the grass floor area of the dwelling or more than 600 square feet. So basically, that's why that exemption is there, so that it's not to, to trick somebody back because their building isn't big enough or something like that. And then.
And it seems like the exemption, or the exception up top means you can't store anything related to a, you know, licensed caregiver cannabis operation outside. Is that, am I reading that right?
Right, because we're not prohibiting, we're, yeah, we don't.
Makes sense to me. And then number seven basically says you can't have employees as a home occupation growing operation. Is that, am I understanding that one correctly? 503 dot 7?
Yeah, it has like, oh, sorry, dot 7.
So by, because it says down below, it says, "In addition to the residents of the dwelling unit, no more than two full-time employees." But that doesn't apply to the.
Right.
Medical cannabis, so they're, yeah.
We're trying to not step into regulating them too much so that we don't step on any toes and.
Number seven is trying to say that the caregiver and the resident have to be the same person. So your employee can't be the registered caregiver. Like you can't use that to get around the standard.
But I read it as saying, "In addition, you can't have any employees." Am I just reading it wrong?
I think it's like exempting it from that.
Cuz it says, "Except for medical cannabis." So it's saying, like, medical cannabis is accepted from, oh, I could, I guess it's a new sentence. Yep, sorry. It's confusing.
Sorry, this was crafted by Amy and Grady, so I.
Well, I think the, the track changes.
Yeah, I think it's like two parts. So you as the resident have to be the caregiver, and then they're can be employees. But the employees can't be the caregiver, cuz that'd be a way somebody could like try to get around it.
Yep.
That makes sense. I'm on board.
So basically, the caregiver will have to be the resident, so it's their home occupation. So another thing I wanna point out is that it was instructed to not, so on the MDA, MDB, remember how there's that, that's the only zoning district that regulated the size up to 10,000 square feet? And we were gonna just add it to the language that's already there, and that has been moved now, so it's under performance standards. So it's a little inconsistent, but hopefully, as we clean up the zoning ordinance, we won't have performance standards under that section, cuz it's not really where it belongs.
Got, okay. Yeah.
So that, hopefully, people will read both sections together so that they catch on, on that restriction, on that one zone.
So the idea is to eventually move performance standards out of the list of uses in each district and put it in its own.
That's my idea, and also, my idea is to alphabetize it so that it's easier to find what you're looking for.
Why would anything be easy in the Freeport zoning ordinance? I don't know what you're.
Yeah, you'll have some like, so like some of these sections that we're going into, she was like, why are you switching terms? We're like, cuz that's how we're trying to switch, or we're trying to switch to get all these performance terms, but it's gonna be.
Yeah, it's a process, right. And if you don't start.
Or like Wayne pointed out, some wording in the last one, so.
Yeah.
It's a living document that we just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm totally on board with that. I know, I sort of noticed that it moved, and I, yeah.
I think this is well thought out. I mean, I, you know, when I read it, I couldn't come up with anything that, you know, we haven't identified or, or, you know, missing that we should probably put in.
Yeah, no, this is, I think it's great.
It's a collaboration between the other towns that I plagiarized it from, and the town attorneys and Caroline.
It's good.
I think the only thing I just wanna note here, there was a little bit of confusion. So one thing that language got added here is that if you are, I can't, so the terminology was changed to cannabis establishment, you might notice in the permitted uses, which includes either of the two uses of the manufacturing and processing or cultivation. But the attorney did clarify that if you have a cannabis establishment and somebody then chooses to move in next to you, you're not becoming legally non-conforming. Like you were there first, so you still.
I like that section.
Retain, you still retain your rights. You can still expand. You can still operate. So that was one change. Just, I know you guys talked about it a little bit, so just, I think it's important to know. And then you added that setback of 100 feet from residences. She said, for other towns that choose to do that, it's actually pretty lenient.
If you wanted to add a higher buffer, then it might get complicated. We might have to eliminate some districts because, you know, there's not much that can be due in some of them because the house is already really close by, and the setbacks are pretty low. So the licensing, I think we're gonna move with that, but it's gonna be by, you know, town council and so, I mean, and ordinance committee that's gonna work on it. And I don't know which direction they're gonna go. The one I just drafted is to ma, basically make it easier for the clerks to process it. So it's not adding more standards to it. That's just my first draft. I don't know what's gonna be looked at or not. And of course, you know, for people who are listening in, you know, the way the performance standards are drafted and in addition to the state law, you know, they have to meet all these other state requirements for the adult use such as, you know, lighting on any gate or perimeter entry point. The doors have to be high security, and such must be the windows. They do have to have monitor alarms on all the entry points, and I think the windows as well. And video surveillance, and they must have lighting around the perimeter of the facility for adult-use facilities.
Great. Anybody have thoughts, questions?
I just had one, one word I wanted to, well, this is minor. I wouldn't wanna cause any delay over this. But in, under performance standards, in section little A and section little B on page 35, you say that something may not be proposed within a certain distance. And technically, it should be, will not be, may not be, would not be allowed as opposed to proposed. You know, people can propose anything they want to. They have freedom of speech. So I would just suggest we replace propose with allowed in two different places.
Oh, okay. With the setbacks from schools and childcare, no cannabis establishment shall be allowed?
Allowed.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe just go to permitted. That's like more of a consistent terminology we use.
Yeah, that's fine, too.
Yep.
Good catch.
I had a little wordsmithing thing, to, you know, try to steal some of Wayne's thunder.
Yes, we already corrected that other inconsistency.
Performance standards, what is it, C2B? Yeah, 36, page 36, right at the top. Says, "There may be no display of cannabis and paraphernalia so as to be clearly visible from the exterior of the facility." I would just cross out "so as to be clearly." So it says, "There's, there may be no display of cannabis and," and I might say, "and/or paraphernalia visible from the exterior of a facility."
Do you need to put a cannabis before the paraphernalia? Paraphernalia is pretty vague on its own.
Sure. Yeah, right.
Or cannabis. So as to be visible?
So I would just say, "There, there may be no display of cannabis and/or cannabis paraphernalia visible from the exterior of a facility."
But why would there only be cannabis? Well, I guess there could be.
It could like grow it in the window or something.
Yeah, the idea is to not look through the window and see like rows of plants, right?
Yeah, a lot of them, like I know near where I live, a lot of them do have like film on the windows. You can't see it. Or you can't see like the middle. You can see above and below.
Yeah, interesting.
And that section raised a question for me. I'm not proposing any particular change, but under odor management, for example, and that visual you just talked about, if there's nothing visible beyond the property and there's no odor allowed beyond the property, what's the reason for the buffer?
With the buffer from the residences.
Other school buffers, for example?
Oh, the schools, that's by the state. So the state says that we should have at least the 500. Like that's the minimum we can go, but, but their recommendation is 1,000. And a lot of even like other states in the West Coast have like similar rules. The residential one that we threw in at the last meeting, that was mostly in thinking about, you know, like, so the setbacks for, you know, some of the districts that we're looking at, like commercial 1, and I believe commercial, village commercial 3, you know, you have residential uses in those property, in those districts as well. And like the, the setback might just be like 15 feet. So it's kind of like, it's more like a preemptive, you know, like we know that odor, odor is something that, that's like the number one on the chart of what complaints have come across with other towns. So it, it's kind of a way of like preventing the conflict into the future. And I think 100 feet, it's not from the property line. It's from the building. So that's, you know, not.
I have no problem with it. It's just sort of, you know, it's sort of redundant, you know, if you have a buffer, plus you have nothing even allowed at the beginning of the buffer.
I see it as sort of a tacit, sorry, Anna, as sort of a tacit acknowledgement that realistically, the odor control, we can say, no odor's out, but it's probably not gonna happen. And that's what we've heard from the folks who live close in town. And so 100 feet, you know, hopefully, it'll help on some days when the wind's blowing in some very.
Yeah, odors are hard, like from an enforcement perspective.
They're impossible.
We go out and smell like chicken waste more than you'd think. So they, they are, and you know, like I might be more sensitive with a mob bird, like you're on the wind, you're right. Like there's so many.
You made a good point. It's really not 100 feet, cuz the buffer is 100 feet from the, the improvement. And that's usually what, there's a side yard, you know, buffer of 25 feet, so really it's only 75 feet. So it's, it's just a good way of just acknowledging, yeah, we hit something.
So how do we police that if there's an odor? How is that policed?
There's, I mean, there are standards, I think. Technically, you could go out with a, with a measuring device that would pick up on an odor, I think, right?
Yeah, it would be.
We talked about this.
I think, yeah, I think there, I think I heard there was some kind of.
Yeah, and then there, right, and then it's a, yeah.
It would start with a complaint, presumably.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Fortunately, nobody on the planning board has enforcement responsibilities. It is a tough one, yeah.
How was it enforced? I mean, say there's a smell, what happens?
I think it's the code.
Somebody would call the codes officer, make a complaint, and then they would have to go out there and verify the situation. And if there is an order that's detectable, they would be non-compliant with the, with our provisions. So they would be, you know, risking losing their licensing or having the code officer tell them that they're in violation.
Is that what happens if there's an odor?
That's what happens if there's any kind of, if somebody doesn't meet a standard, then they're in violation of the code, and then they get a notice of violation for, for anything, you know, like for anything somebody's doing wrong.
Just notice when I go get supplies, I mean, it's all depends on what part of the growing season it's in, you know? And comes right through the walls down the warehouse, you know, and it's, it's one bay over, and I'm just wondering, you can always tell. Are they getting ready to harvest, you know?
Exactly. It's always, it's.
In the case of like a lot of odors, we don't have a standard. I mean, here we clearly have a standard. The code officer can say, okay, I can smell it from the street. It says you can't go beyond the property line.
Time to change your charcoal filters.
So there, I think there's gonna be an enforcement mechanism. Where I use the example of chickens, but like, that's harder if you don't have a clear standard.
But that's, that's the problem with this, is that, like you said, you know, well, one person can smell it from the road, another person, I don't, I don't smell anything, actually. And there's no thresholds on here. Like you, you can't get above a certain, I don't know.
Not like a DBA that you can go out and measure sound.
Exactly. So it's, it's, it's very subjective, which as a, as an ordinance makes it, it's just tough.
Like if the odor detection device is the code enforcement officer's nose, right?
Yeah, I don't know enough about it to comment, but we can definitely, if it's a concern, we can definitely get more information on it.
It's always gonna be a tough issue, I think. I think it reads well. I think this is an acknowledgement we're trying as, as a community to.
Right, and if, I mean, if that turns into the thing that's, hey, you got a buffer, but it needs to be 300 feet.
Yeah.
You know, then we listen to that, or some future board listens to that concern and evaluates it. I think this is a really good start, personally. Did you have something you were gonna say, Anna? I kinda cut you off.
No, not at all. It was similar to what you were just gonna say about even though the odor management in the document says, you know, it's gonna prevent any odor, it's likely not, so.
Yep. Great.
It's not a public hearing.
Right.
You wanna take comment, or you?
Well, if there's anybody here who, yeah.
The online people.
Yeah, who, I don't, can't actually read those names, but.
It's your regulars. It's Erin, Hillary, and Peter.
Oh, perfect. All our favorite industry experts. Sure, yeah, if, if, if anyone has anything to say, please raise your virtual hand, and we will happily listen.
Everyone stare at the screen. You see something?
There are no hands.
No penalty for going first.
There are no hands up on Zoom to comment.
Okay. Well, I, I think, I know there's a final round of legal review, right? But I think with the, with the couple of sort of very minor tweaks suggested, I think we're ready for.
I don't expect any substantial comments from legal review. I think they could just be, you know, legal terminology or minor tweaks to the language. So if you guys are fine with that, if you feel like you wanna go to public hearing, I mean, if you go to public hearing, you, I mean, you could take stuff out, but you can't make substantial changes. So you wanna make sure this is really the draft you wanna go with. I mean, if at the public hearing you get comments that makes you wanna revisit at 100%, you can do that. That's why we have the public hearing. But before we notify, I mean, this is gonna be online, and there's gonna be a lot of people reading it. So we wanna make sure that if you have questions, we've answered them, if you want changes. If you, we've looked at this a lot, and I would say Steph's not really jumping out. So if you see a typo or missing punctuation or anything like that, please don't be shy. Please just let us know, and we'll incorporate it into the changes. But if you guys feel like you're ready, your next meeting, assuming we can get the final legal review done, your next meeting would be December 7th, which you could have a public hearing on this if you wanted to.
I think this is to a point where we'd have a public hearing.
I say go for it.
That's my opinion.
I would love to put this in front of the council.
I think this is, this is a.
Get it.
Well thought out.
Yeah.
I know you guys have been talking about cannabis for a year, but I do think it's important at the public hearing that we do a presentation on the directive, what we're really talking about here, and walk the public through. So.
Yeah.
You'll have to kind of go hear it one more time, I think, to give ample opportunity, but have some coffee.
Yep.
Just give me a warning.
Making sure that I didn't make any other notes. I don't, I, yeah, I think it's really good.
Me, too.
Thank you, Cecilia. I know you.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Thank you all. Other towns have put pieces together.
Well, no, it's great. I don't think it's plagiarism if it's a, if it's a.
It's a public document.
Public documents like that.
I think it's just organized well, too. It reads good. I think it's good. I think it's ready.
Page turner at this point. Um, all right. Well, I mean, you know, compared to some zoning stuff. Um, yeah, we're zoning nerds. All right, item number, any final comments on this? Are we good?
Did you take a vote to see if it, no.
I think it's consensus from the board that you're ready to go to public hearing on it as well.
And we're gonna have enough people at the December seventh.
Yeah, does anyone know they have a conflict December seventh?
I do.
Okay, let's have everyone check. I just checked, I'm good. Are you hybrid, or you're out?
I'm not.
Okay.
I'm good.
Pearl Harbor Day, isn't it, December seventh?
Yep, Veterans Day.
Carolyn, I was trying to plan for January. Are we gonna have, it will be the first Wednesday in January?
Um, so back to this, let's back up to December. I need to confirm that Mitch is gonna be there.
Okay.
We do have a board member that has their name on the ballot for election next week. If somebody is.
And so I win or lose.
If somebody, if somebody is gonna have to step down from the planning board and we're tied on a quorum, I'm gonna email you and say, let's hold off.
Yep.
I think we shouldn't do it if we're suddenly down to four, but let me talk to Mitch, and then we'll see what happens for election, and then we'll finalize the date. Andy is running.
For?
Counsel.
Counsel, okay.
Wow, good for you, Andy. And then as far as January, um, the January meeting is scheduled to be the fourth. It is, I think, the first, I think the second's actually a legal holiday. If you guys wanna tentatively not meet that date due to conflicts, we could look at meeting a different day, or.
All right.
One, one independent status.
Yeah, I think the fourth is, works for me. I don't know. Yeah.
Okay, so Anna, you're out on the fourth?
No, I just wanted to confirm, but I was just wondering, because of the holidays, if it was gonna be a different date, but that's fine. I just need to know to get childcare.
Okay, yeah, so I'd say like we're, there's some big topics coming up. I'm still working on the comp plan RFP. We have the design RFP. And between that, since we're in a lull on some other things, Cecilia's been working on some cleanup. So I think it could be, if we're between big projects, Cecilia's been working on some ordinance cleanup. We could have a hodgepodge of random ordinance cleanup inconsistency to have you guys look at.
Ordinance cleanup, fun. Plenty of that to do, right?
There is.
For job security. Um, all right. Continued discussion of possible amendments to Section six oh two, site plan review, the report zoning ordinance. So this one, basically looking at ways to streamline.
Yeah, so this was another directive by the council, and I think something that came out of the vision and something our boards have talked about for a while, just to kind of further streamline, um, the site plan review process. Again, this is just site plan review. It only applies to people doing commercial projects that are not. It applies to people in design review, but you also have other layers of review, and design review and subdivision are two other layers that could work with this. So this is strictly site planned, so this will mostly benefit people out of the design review district. Because today, if you're in design review, you're gonna pretty much have to go to the board for anything. Um, and then a lot of this also is just kind of cleanup and rearranging and putting stuff. Like, for example, we had applicability, we had some staff approval ability, like in the wrong sections, so just tweaking the language. It's pretty similar to the last version that you saw. We did have legal review. I'll just kind of walk you through it, because it's been a while. So, um, notification of meetings, staff review, we're gonna keep, notify within two hundred feet in five days for project review, which is the board that's gonna review bigger projects. They have a seven-day notification period. We are proposing to up that to five hundred feet notification. As you get into the rural areas, um, we're not gonna notice it as much. It can actually be a big increase in some of our more dense areas with the smaller property lines. I'm clarifying, we, we send, um, notification to the property owners assessed as of April one. Any questions on that administrative stuff? Changes here, as talked about before, are increasing the thresholds for town planner review. This gives example, like lighting, landscaping, recalculation of parking requirements is already allowed today. Changes to signs, and this was something that the project review board said that we should allow under town planner, because I've had people that have come in for site plan review, but not had a ground side, like Doetons, they did a car wash, so they had to come in for a site plan review, but I didn't have approval, so they had to wait thirty days and make an application, a billion photocopies, and come for a sign. So that was a change here. One thing I did change, we kind of debated, I, I kind of struggled with the thresholds, because we're trying to be more flexible, and today we allow the town planner to approve up to five hundred square feet, but there's no limitation. So really, you could come in, you know, pretty regularly and get five hundred square feet approved. Do people do that? No. I, you know, we've been really lucky. People haven't taken advantage of that. But we had put a period in here that they could ask for modifications of a thousand square feet over five years. But really, that's like two hundred square feet a year. I felt like that was actually a pretty limiting change. And we also limited it to impaired watershed. So I did propose that we take out the watershed reference and drop that down to a thousand feet over a three-year period. I also think for tracking purposes, that's really more realistic, you know, to remember what happened five years ago. Like, we have tracking methods, but.
Yeah.
But welcome feedback. If that's too lenient, we can go more strict, or we can go more lenient.
I mean, for me, the impervious surfaces is the much more, is the riskier of those two. I mean, nobody's gonna expand a structure in five hundred-foot increments to avoid this process. It's just so expensive to try, like, what are you gonna do, rip the wall down?
The only time we get that, like, we've had like a small greenhouse, we've had sheds. And really, like, when we've looked at stormwater, really a thousand square feet has kind of been like our internal, like, okay, if you go over a thousand square feet, we start to get concerned. But if you're like a thousand or under, like, put a drip edge, or it's gonna work into the existing system. So we haven't really been super concerned, but when you get bigger than that, I think we start to get a little bit worried. And that's actually, um, a good catch. So this allows for modifications. Now, the ordinance is pretty specific. So if somebody was actually decreasing their impervious area, the way it was written today, like, it wasn't clear that I had the ability to sign off. So this would allow an increase or a decrease. Um, and then we're trying to make, we looked at like the more common change of uses that we're seeing, and that aren't huge impacts in trying to make those a little more friendly. So in the Village Commercial One, we've always allowed retail and restaurant to kind of be interchangeable with town planner approval. We're just clarifying that that could include restaurant carryout. We're seeing more of that since the pandemic. And really, the intensity of the use, and that same standard has always been if it doesn't abut a residential use. And then the other thing we're seeing is a change from retail to office. Um, we're seeing a lot of that. It's been smaller. So that's something, if they're not changing the site and they can show they meet utilities in parking, would allow them to do that at the staff level, up to fifteen hundred square feet. For example, we had a salon going next door, and they had to wait a month and come to the board. Or we had, um, Go Green, I think it is, like pest control on US Route One. They had to do the same thing. And I always feel bad when somebody comes in and is like, why do I have to go to the board? I'm not changing anything, and I like, because it says you do. Like, they're changing nothing, like, nothing on the site. So we do have some of that, and that's really like a small, tends to be like a small local business. And then the seasonal accessory outdoor seating is already permitted today. Any questions on that, too big, too small?
I think it's good, I, you know, I think, I like the lenient, you know, I mean, this is, the idea is, is, I think it's just silly to have to go in front of a project review board for some of these things.
I think there's like been mixed feelings. Some people are like, go big, and then some people are like, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah.
We're still a small town, so, um, compromise. So moving on to staff review, again, this had a bunch of cleanup. We put all the about our notification in the same area to help it read better. The biggest change here, I think, is for some reason, which other towns do too, the police chief's not on staff review. I think it'd be a good addition to have the police chief. It's good to make them be aware. They often have safety concerns, circulation, lighting. So we're proposing to add them. Because we're doing that, we have to up the quorum to four, because it would be a board of six, which we don't love an even number, but it is what it is. So this would allow change of uses. That would be a little bit bigger, and for uses that weren't specified in the last section, this would be expansions to structures or impervious surface between one thousand and two thousand square feet. We called out parking lots, but actually that's covered by impervious surface. Our attorney caught that, um, kind of duplication. And then pretty much the rest is cleanup. Um, Cecilia caught that when we added the accessory solar generation systems in here, we forgot, we didn't cross-reference it right. It's for ground-mounted for other than one and two families. So that's tweaking those a little bit. Again, I think upping the square footage threshold, we'll see some more items. And then the change of use, I think the biggest benefit here is the timing. We can usually get people in within a week, because they're smaller. Questions on staff review board?
Uh, yeah, two really quick questions. First is just a, why, uh, why have the amended notations been struck in some places and not others?
Um.
Curious about the, like.
What do you mean?
You know, what, so like on page, the last page of staff review, um, J, it says, ground-mounted accessory solar energy generation systems, and then amended effective, effective three sixteen.
Um, I'm actually not really sure, but as I look at that, we might wanna keep those in.
Because a lot, most of them were struck, and then a couple of them I noticed were still in there.
Yeah, I think like.
Curious, I don't really.
For example, like if we're doing site plan review, I think that preference would actually be to like do a comma and add the date, so we can look and see the date. This is something we implemented probably within the past ten years, because it was really hard to look at our ordinance. There's no real science to it. But I think it's a good flag, so let us go back and see what makes sense. I mean, that, we could delete them and just note the whole section was updated with a certain date, but like, there is some benefit to going back, I think, sometimes, and looking like, for example, when we added telecommunication or when we added solar. I welcome thoughts on that.
That was my, so my second thing is about the telecommunication. It seems like adding a time period in the increase in the tower height might be good, right? Sort of like the change to impervious.
So telecommunication is an entire section of our ordinance that we need to look at. We're pretty strict, and we have rules. Most of them are maxed out on height, but there's some stuff that under federal regulations is actually exempt, and we can no longer review. So I would propose that we leave that as is for today.
Okay.
And we need, that's a section. We need to flag the whole thing, and then potentially tweak it in here, because I don't know that we can do that anymore. But we have, it's not something we've really had a, a lot of lately.
Yeah, right.
So let me flag that for future.
Yeah, and I, I mean, sort of similar to adding onto your building in two hundred-foot increments. Probably doesn't make sense to add onto your tower in a little ten percent increments.
I think I'm like, can think of like one time where there was, maybe they added onto a tower. Did you have thoughts on the amendment date, what your preference is going forward? Do you wanna keep them, get rid of them, don't care?
I mean, I think it's kind, it, it, I guess my thought on it was that it's hard to maintain consistency, you know?
Yeah, it is.
It's like, how do you, you know, either they're, I mean, they're helpful when they're there sometimes, but if they're not everywhere, then why are they in some places?
It is hard, like, if you change the word "za," like, we don't put it in.
That's tough, yeah.
And does it, but I guess maybe the follow-up question is, is it an issue to have them where they're helpful, and then not have them where they're either not helpful, or just they aren't there for some other reason, like somebody didn't put it there, and then everybody forgot when it was amended, and it's too much work to go back through the whole thing and figure out like, when all these amendments happen? So, I mean, maybe if they're not doing any harm and they're helpful, then yeah, just.
I mean, the other thing is you can go to the inside cover of the ordinance now and since sometime in the two thousands, scroll through and see the amendments. I think if we, we'll take a look at it, and we'll bring back something that's a little more consistent, because I think you're right, we did it some places and not other.
All right, project review board, any other questions on staff review board? So we're under the PRB.
Okay, so, and yep, now we're on to PRB. Um, this is a little bit of cleanup, just one thing to clarify in here. And C, three C, just clarifies like, this says people should have a concept plan. They don't always have to. Timing of review, we just made a clear, I noticed there was no section regarding timing of review for staff review. So we just kind of added that in here, that the town planner deems it complete, and then puts it on within twenty-one days. We usually get it on much quicker, but twenty-one days is kind of our standard for PRB, so it just gives us a little, a little bit of time. It gives people, um, a guideline here. Again, this is really just cleaning up. One thing, conditions of approval, if someone wants to amend those, it would have to go back to the board that granted the original approval. The same thing with the renewal. We talked about doing that in different ways, but after talking to the attorney, it seems like if they got approval from staff review, and they're not gonna build it before it, they do substantial construction, that they go back to staff review, back to the board that granted the original, which I think could slow them down a little bit, but I, I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. And then it goes back to the applicable public process, you know, the five hundred square feet, if it's a bigger project, or the two hundred, if it's smaller. I'd gotten some feedback in the past from an applicant that they thought the review by an expert was confusing. We are fortunate to have an in-house engineer. A lot of towns use an outside engineer. Sometimes we do have an outside engineer review projects that go to project review. But either way, the hours are billed out to the applicant, whether they use the in-house engineer or we use an outside. And so that wasn't clear to people, um, they found it confusing, and they were surprised that they had to pay our engineer to, to do that. So that's really just cleanup to that section. Performance guarantee was cleaned up, just to reflect how we currently practice in the forms that we typically take. And then clarification to pre-construction meeting, who can require as-built plans. I think the biggest change here is approval duration. Right now, um, if you don't start the project within two years, before it expires, you can come back to project review and get an extension. That is unlimited. Most, we've had a couple of projects that have come back once. I do have another bigger project in retirement community that I think has come back at a couple points, based upon suggested from our town attorney. She suggested that we do put a limit in here. We have a limit in design review. The limit in here would allow you to come back for one, two-year extension. Again, the two years is being consistent with the original approval to carry that number forward. Any question there?
Just real quick question on, uh, pre-construction meeting.
Yep.
Why does the applicant notify the town planner as opposed to the code enforcer, code enforcement officer? For, and it seems like going to the code, you know, going to Nick in this case would be more efficient, because he's the guy who does the inspections.
I would be really thrilled if Nick could make sure they complied with all their conditions of the PRB approval.
Okay.
Before they started. That'd be great, but I'm, I guess, is he doesn't wanna do that. So they come to me so that.
Okay, so this is, gotcha.
They establish their performance guarantee. A lot of times I'll just help them make sure, like, make sure they got their sewer letter and all that. And then if they, like, before they start work, they actually have a pre-construction meeting with Adam. If it's a really big project, they could meet with all three of us and their team. I mean, they do it different ways. Nick doesn't, and he might have a pre-construction meeting with like bigger projects, but Adam and I really do the project review and the site stuff and the conditions, whereas Nick's doing the building. I mean, he'll look to make sure they're building to what got approved. But that's kind of why. It's more about making sure they do conditions. Happy to change that, though.
Yeah, just slide it in there and see how Nick feels about it. Definitely notice.
So back to, um, staff review board for a minute. I just have a couple of, you know, minor language questions. One is, all, all of these on the list involve some kind of action that triggers the review, except for the last one, ground-mounted accessory solar energy systems. So is the intention construction of, is that the action that would be triggered?
Yeah, yep.
So I guess we should add.
Construction.
Construction of.
Yep.
And.
Good eye, Wayne.
The other one was, um, the thing that introduces that, that list, the following developments shall be eligible for staff, for review by the staff review board. Is developments the best word?
No, I actually don't like that word, because we don't define it, and it's used interchangeably and vague. So I would prefer that we use.
Projects.
Projects, exactly, projects. Um, where do you, can you show me where you see that, Wayne?
Yeah, it's, um, it proceeds, um. Yeah, it's, it proceeds.
Right before it.
Yeah. The following developments shall be eligible for review by the staff review board.
Yeah, that's a good.
You're going to put projects in there?
We changed projects under project review. So I think that.
We could say actions or.
No, I think projects, I think projects is good. We use it consistently. That's a good catch. Cause I have that issue in the Freeport Village overlay district, which we'll talk about later. It uses developments and I'm never really sure how they intended it.
Sorry. I have issue with the Freeport. Oh, it's done good things. But yeah.
Anything else in that section Wayne?
No, that was it.
Those are good. Those are good. Gotcha. And then do you want me to go into submission requirements? This is really just honestly a little bit of cleanup to reflect current practice with regards to number of copies forms. Clarifying what they're putting on the plans. And then I think the only, I'll call it kind of substantial, I guess, but not really in my opinion is under 602 criteria and standards under B. We had reference to design review, but we didn't have reference to section 527, which is the design guidelines for commercial district. But they still have to meet it. So I thought it was a good thing to add it in here just to kind of flag it. So the applicant's aware. And the project review board always does a finding on that. But you gotta keep going, Robert. I don't have the, sorry, I didn't put page numbers on the, oh yeah, right there. Under the standard for relation of proposed buildings to the environment.
Okay.
Yep. That was just adds that reference. The only thing I will note here is I did, the attorney had flagged some concern with the way we had previously been doing appeals. So they're going to give me some attorney language for who appeals have to go to, whether it be board of appeals or superior court. They would take out town planner appeal because anyone has the ability to take something to project review if they have a concern. So I was going to just insert that language in the final draft. I got that yesterday afternoon, but I hadn't had a chance to review it. But again, that's legal stuff on the advice of the town attorney regarding appeals. Questions, comments, concerns?
None.
Good.
Good work.
Do you feel like this is ready for a public hearing in December as well?
I think so.
I think so.
Do you find doing both on one night? Part of the goal with doing it together is that we thought we could maybe, a standalone public hearing does it, just a public hearing ad doesn't go, we'll be doing a lot of notification for this. So you might get more public input.
What did you say about coffee earlier?
The real question is which is going to go first?
You're saying the marijuana is, it's what's going to bring everyone. So you might as well just load it up on.
Well, I think, why do, we want public comment. That's why we have the process. So.
I agree. Yeah.
Yeah. No, I, I agree. Yeah. I think, I mean, putting this first would be real.
Yeah, it would. That's a good point.
Not that I'm advocating for that. I just want.
We can put, you're the chairperson. So we can put stuff in whatever order you want.
I think cannabis should go first. I think cannabis should go first.
I do, yeah.
So you're going to make people wait through cannabis to comment on site plan?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, yeah.
But then everyone's going to leave.
When you put it that way, it sounds bad, but.
No, that's okay. If they're interested, they'll stay.
Yeah.
Well, actually, you know, maybe because this one probably would be a lot quicker.
Well, what if it goes on? Then you're making that room full of people wait for cannabis.
You're gonna, you're gonna play devil's advocate.
You have a week to decide because we're waiting to make sure we have attendance. So sleep on it.
Do a, I don't know what the latest polling.
Think about what kind of coffee you want Anna to bring.
Yeah.
And then we'll.
What about bringing cannabis?
Probably frowned upon.
That would be very frowned upon.
Yeah.
That's funny Wayne.
Yep. Okay. So item five, the last item for tonight is something that Caroline and I talked about, thought would be a good idea, given the upcoming workload that we have or will have soon to update the existing design review ordinance in the Freeport Village overlay district and also whatever the color overlay, you know, just the whole, the whole smorgasbord of.
I saw item five and like, what is this? I don't, I don't.
All converge on my house.
You talked about it. You just thought about it, I think.
Yeah, probably.
So I think, I think it would be, you know, this is something we've talked about a lot over the years, but it has been quite a while since it has come before any board. And I'm, I think for some members of this board, it may be totally new. So I thought it would be good to have a little bit of a refresher, hopefully relatively quick refresher. And then we can maybe make, make Mitch watch it.
We, I already talked to Mitch. He was either going to listen in on cable, which he could be doing, or he is going to watch it. I think this is, I know this is something.
Cause I know he's one of the people who has come onto the board and I know he will.
He's interested in.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know he will appreciate this.
This is a tough one, you know, these, these standards, this is, especially if you don't have this kind of background, it's, it's challenging.
There is a fancy PowerPoint that some of you had seen that I could not locate. So for efficiency and it's going to make it shorter. We're just kind of going to go through the ordinance and do a height overview. So we have been talking about for quite a few years now in Freeport, our design review ordinance and some of the, I think, challenges it presents to both the board and the applicant during the review process. So we'll talk a little bit about what the ordinance is and what, where it applies and what kind of things it regulates. We won't go into all the detail. So we have the design review ordinance. Part of that is the color overlay district. And then we have the Freeport Village design standards. So we always like to use SAM as an example because there are some properties downtown like SAM and they fall into all of them.
It's actually a pretty small overlap, I think.
Well, I brought, that's the one thing I had to bring the overlap map. So we've talked about these standards and kind of the complication it's, it brings. But that being said, I think, you know, I always talk about when I first started in Freeport, that it's been a long time. So the internet wasn't as awesome as it is today. Nobody knew how to use it. Nobody had a computer. And so people used to come in all the time and ask for copies of this ordinance. Like, how did you do it? Like a lot of people have modeled their standards. Not so much anymore because it's outdated. So what we have here, I'll show you the design review map. We have two design review districts. We have the first district, which is pretty much in downtown. Sorry. Which is in the downtown area typically, or mostly on Main Street. I like to show you this big messy one just for, just for fun. It's a little bit washed out in here. I'm sorry. Hard to see. So you have two design review districts. They are outlined. You can see one is outlined in blue here. And then you have this second design review district, which goes down Bow Street and South Street and is outlined in pink. Sorry, my computer and the monitor are not doing the same thing. So it's a little bit hard to see in here. So you have the two design review districts. And so in the design review districts, each building is giving a category, which is why you have all these colors. And so you have class A buildings, which have been identified as the most architecturally and historically significant buildings in the design review district. You have the class B, which are medium structures. And then you have the class C, which were identified when this was done, you know, 30 plus years ago as being the least significant or any new building is classified as a C. So based upon your building class, if you want to make changes to your building, you have to come in and get review and approval. So what does that really mean? It's been interpreted that if you're in the design review district and you want to make any changes to the exterior facade of your building or your site, and it's visible from the public right of way, you need to come to the board. The only, there's only two things in here that there's staff approval ability on. Minor modification to signage or temporary seasonal accessory outdoor seating, which we just added. So if you have a residential house downtown and you like want to go to Home Depot on the weekend and change your door, you can't. You need to come in, you need to get approval.
You need to pay $55.
You have to pay $55. There's no better notification. And you need to go to the board. And so in this ordinance, which I won't go into great detail, there's about 10 standards. So it looks at, it's all about compatibility and compatibility with the structure itself. You know, if it's historic structure, they'll want to see something that's appropriate for a historic structure of that time. And then it's also about compatibility with the downtown and the abutting properties. We have application after application of people in hours of meetings talking about vinyl siding and shutters and doors and shingles on the roof. We see less of that today because we've had more commercial down there. But pretty much anything you want to do beyond ordinary maintenance and repair, you have to come to the board. More recently, items the project review board has seen would be homeowners wanting to do improvements. We've seen quite a few people come in and have to do accessible ramps that they have to design in a way to be compatible. A lot of change from like old wood siding to composite. We've seen, you know, people have to upgrade the buildings for code and so they're going to new materials or changing the style. Like we just had Thomas Moser Building on Main Street come in. They don't even have balusters because of how their railing's so long. So they had to come in for material changes. From a developer's perspective, I think a lot of the complaints that we get with this ordinance is that there's a lot of room for interpretation and it's vague. You know, as we're seeing different uses coming to downtown, you know, there's scale, there's height. The zoning ordinance gives you a number in the zoning district, but then you have this overlay of design review on top and it gives you a standard that has more wiggle room for interpretation. So there's a desire to clean up these standards and then I think modernize them in some ways. And then there's been the idea, you know, with passports about making things prescriptive, like people have to come if they want to put a fence up. Are there certain type of fences that has a community we could live with and that might be appropriate downtown?
Or are there things that we can do at the staff review level too?
Yep. Or the staff review level. Cause this is so limited.
I will say without throwing any of my neighbors under the bus, I think that the enforcement has been pretty, I mean, people. First of all, I think there's probably a lot of people who legitimately have no idea that this even exists.
Yes.
And so they want to change something and it's like, you just change it because you, you know, you live in town and it's your house. And why wouldn't you be able to change it? And so I think there's some improvements that are that, and then there's some, there's some.
What do you mean improvements unto that? Like they're, they're figuring out that they can't or?
No, they're, people just go ahead and do stuff and then there's no, there's not really any enforcement because.
It's very hard to enforce. That's, that's part of the problem.
It is for small stuff.
Of course. Who's got the time and?
And I'm sure it's a mix of people who legitimately don't know and people who start to read the standards, get confused and just think, ah, I'm just going to go do this.
I think that's probably right. And this is kind of the problem with overlay districts, right? You know, you've got the, the zoning and that is a live document that changes and the overlay doesn't a lot of times get changed.
I mean, we could change it, right? We just haven't.
Yeah, you could. Yeah, you could change design review or actually the council can change design review without you. It's ordinance that they can change. I think, you know, the biggest things I, it, the ones that we tend to catch, I think, are people like ripping up our front porch or doing an addition. This really comes into play with new buildings. One of the other things here is that it's not a historic preservation ordinance. It doesn't always save buildings. It's really written in favor of the applicant. So you, if you come in and ask for something, if like it's a motion to approve and you only get three As, it still passes. It has to be a motion to like not approve and it has to pass by majority. So it's really is written in favor of the applicant. And then the other thing here is that for buildings that are class A or B, those most important buildings, there's a four month notice period and a legal process and public hearing ads that you need to do before you can demo a building. That being said, it has saved buildings. We've saved a couple of buildings that have been relocated, habitat relocated a house. We had, was it the Billard Hall on Lower Main Street? Do you remember that Andy, where like Chilton's was that got moved?
Where?
On Lower Main Street where they built the.
The red one?
The new, I'm calling it the new Chilton's, which is mid-coast. Yeah, the red one.
Oh yeah. Yeah. The barn got taken out. The barn got taken out to Batall Island.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh no, no. Down Flying Point. Excuse me. Down Flying Point.
Yeah. So they have saved some buildings, but then like we've had other things where they come in. For example, when they redid Elleveen's childhood home over here, they wanted to take off the porch, which was LL's smoking room apparently. But they had to wait four months because nobody wanted to save it. So there's some like loopholes in there. And so then.
Didn't we make it easier to do some sort of demolition?
We made it easier. Yes, they can waive the four months if they find a use for it before. But I would say in more recent times, the more recent ones, people, it hasn't, it's been like portions of things, not something you want to save. Or there's been taking stuff down because it's just rotten.
Yeah.
We also have the design review too, that was brought in down on Bow Street and South Street when we introduced the village mixed use districts. The other component, which you see that kind of magenta line in the middle is the color overlay district. If you're in the color overlay district, which is really the corridor between, Route 1 corridor, Main Street, between Kendall Lane and Shaw's. If you're in that district, you can paint your building any historic color from any paint manufacturer's historic color palette. And if you want to use another color, you have to come to the board. I think back in the day when it was adopted, it was reactive to something that certain people in the community didn't like. Back in the day, there weren't many historic color palettes. Now you can find so many historic color palettes. It doesn't say, it even has to be a New England historic color palette. It doesn't say you can't do stripes or polka dots. I'm not saying anyone should do that, but yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that that's really as effective as it was intended.
Yeah. I, I also felt I, another, I guess, brief anecdote. I was trying to abide by that when we repainted our house and as people do, I got sort of panicked about the paint color and I ended up just painting it white, but I didn't pick like a, a soft white. I just went with white because I didn't want to run afoul of the, of the, the guidelines. Because I was assured that white had been added as a color that was okay to do. And I, the house is too bright. I should have gone with something.
It's interesting. White, you can't find white on a historic color palette. This actually came up years ago, but we had.
Really?
Yeah. Because everyone was like, it's white. You always would think of like white being an old house. But we had the historical society weigh in and they felt like it was fine. So we've kind of always gone along with it. But yeah, you couldn't find like a true white on a historic color palette.
Do we know, you know, what the, during the downtown vision plan, everything, how people feel about this overlay district?
Well, we're going to get to that one next.
Okay.
The other, I have a question. In terms of the history of this, I remember, I think it was when I first joined the board back in 2018, there was a consultant hired and he was trying to make this document more directive, like what we wanted. And then he kind of went away and I don't remember what happened.
Yeah. So we started, after we met with like the project review board and planning board, we started talking about this. And then we were working with a consultant on some other projects because we were short-staffed. So they were like sitting in on the meetings with us. And then we were going to go to the council because we didn't want to go, really it was only on the radar, the two project review and planning board at that point in time. We were going to go to the council and workshop to see if there was support. I mean, we were going to do a budget request, but then we hit a pandemic. So we didn't. And then.
It was right before that.
Yeah. And so then we got delayed and we haven't brought it back up. And then we did visioning. And I would say this really came to light for other people during the visioning and we have $40,000 to do ordinance work. So this is a project we have funding for. So.
But I also remember just to say from him being here, and I remember he like had come up with something and we were going through it. I remember at the time, I remember he, he was asking for more direction from us of like, well, what kind of design do you want to see in your town? And we were all like, we don't know.
But now I think, and so now, now after we go through this, we'll look at the overlay, but now we just did a visioning. So I think we have, I think we have more, we have more directive.
Yeah. I mean, like the la, I don't remember. I think it was the last.
This is the problem with this. Like everyone keep, like we keep talking about it and then there's always been like, but what do we really want? And so I think that's where the vision.
But I think, so the fa, the last meeting with principal group, or I think it was the last one, it was a workshop. It was here in this room.
Oh yeah. Design week. Yeah. Yeah.
And there were all kinds of big boards up on the, up on the walls. And it was like this or this. You know, what do you like? And people, I think they had post-it notes or something. People would write their initials and stick a post-it note on. I like this sort of vision for that. So that data must be somewhere, right?
Visual preference.
Yeah. Yeah. Visual preference. Yeah. So, so I think there are some, hopefully we have some of that data.
But that's good directive and that's, that's what this should reflect, right? Is what people want to see downtown. Cause that's, that's where this is, you know?
Yeah. So I mean, like I said, it's something we've been talking about for a long time. So on top of that, the other thing that we have, which is what you have here is we have all this like hatch mark, which you can see there's not a lot of overlap, but there's a little bit of overlap, especially in the area of South Street and Bow Street, which doesn't show up on the screen. And then we want, this is some other design guidelines. I won't bore you with that today. So you do have some overlap. So we have this document here, which is the Freeport Village overlay district. So this project was started like in 2000. So this project was started like in 2002. This was a village planning effort that looked at the zoning in the South Street, Bow Street areas and changed it to mostly village mixed-use. And the thought there, it used to be three village mixed-use, there's now two, is that that area, when the Bow Street market expanded, would build out as more of like a local business type area. They allowed mixed uses and had smaller setbacks and it would be pedestrian-friendly and bikeable and walkable. And things would be built closer to the road because you'd say hi to your neighbor on your way to, you know, walking to get your groceries or whatever. And we just haven't seen it that way. You guys did a little bit of cleanup to this. This document's interesting. At this point, I think there's been some really good things. I think the reduced setbacks in this area have helped a lot of people. Why they didn't put those into zone, the zoning ordinance in the first place, I'm not, I'm not really sure. For existing family homes, they don't have to do a lot of things, but if you want to do a new home, there are some design standards, which we've struggled with too, because some people want to do a new project and they can't do certain things. But if they build it and then come in and ask, there's kind of a loophole. And then there's a lot of standards in here for, apply to build out in the village mixed-use, which we could incorporate into zoning, but we haven't really seen come into play. And there's some landscape and buffer requirements in here too. But at this point, that list is so old that we actually have some invasious, invasive species. So I think the important thing about this document identified in our last comp plan was to look at the effectiveness of this and see if we really need it. I think we have money to go out and ultimately have the design or, design review ordinance updated. I think, you know, would craft it in a way that during the vision process, we identified that our charming downtown, what has retained some of like its historic value is still important to the community. But we do need to modernize things and we, and we do want a certain look. So we're gonna go out and get a quote to redo this document. I think we'll set it up in a way to give the consultant flexibility. You know, there's different ways you can do this now. There's different ideas. You could have patterns, you could have prescriptive standards. I think we could give them flexibility while sharing the existing ordinances, some of the things we know we want improved. And then sharing some of the vision and the, the vision boards and what we know our community likes. At the same time, we're gonna want them to look at the areas on the map where these two documents overlap. I think once we get that done in-house staff, well then, once we see what the suggestion is to do with these two where they overlap, staff would bring back a suggestion for what we do with the remainder of the Freeport Village overlay, because some of it could definitely be incorporated into zoning.
Yep. I think the more we incorporate in zoning, the better.
Yeah, the only downside to zoning is when you put everything in zoning, well, it's hard. There's a whole amendment process, which is fine, but it does limit flexibility. So if we put it in zoning, like a lot of times you can't waive it, which is totally fine. It's gonna make it clear what the standards are, but...
Yeah, that's a good point.
Right now, this is part of the zoning. It's actually an addendum, but you can actually incorporate it into the text. So that's really just like a, a crash course in what we've been talking about on and off for years. Happy to answer questions or go into it more. We more just wanted to make sure you guys don't use these documents a lot. Like Sam said, we haven't amended design review, so it was more just to kind of reintroduce them, give you some weekend reading to read outside. It's gonna be nice. And know that something's gonna come before you that's gonna incorporate these documents.
It's a heavy lift, but it's all part of the, the downtown vision plan and...
I would love to see something that is, you know, has enough, enough teeth to keep, to preserve the character of the downtown that everybody says they want, but is also user-friendly enough that somebody could say, hey, I want to, I want to change my door this weekend. Can I go and, as long as I pick the right door, or as long as, you know, that you actually have at least a chance of, you know?
The one thing I didn't mention too is, so we had some money a while back. It's a little bit dated, but it's still, I think it's still relevant because not enough changes happen. We paid a consultant to inventory all the A and B buildings and they had a historical background. So they went around and did an inventory. My map no longer works because the connections died. I can't remember how many parcels, but they inventoried all the A and B buildings to see what still is contributing to the historic valid, value. We do have a lot of buildings and we actually do have some pockets that the buildings together are creating like a historic pocket, for lack of a better word. But we do have some buildings that they felt like have been so far altered that they're really not. They might look cute, but they don't really have, retain historic value. Sorry, I forgot to mention that. So we have that data too that we can share, but I think any guidance like Sam had, that you guys have before we craft the RFP, I kind of think at this point, we've talked about it for so long, we've had the vision, we'll send it out and you'll get the new document back. But any other thoughts you have on what you'd like to see, we welcome.
I was just wondering, other surrounding towns, like Brunswick, Yarmouth, how does their design review ordinance look and?
Yeah, all town, a, a lot of towns have them. We've done a lot of research. They all have different variations. Some are prescriptive, some are...
Are there any like that are inspiring in terms of finding that mix of flexibility yet retaining the character of the town?
Um, I would say like we've looked at some like more coastal, southern coastal towns, like York and stuff have had some good ones. And then people do like the reviews in a different way. Like we used to have a separate design review board. We streamlined our process, so it's done by the project review. You know, I think when we sent off RFP, I think we'll get interest beyond just our local area from consultants a little bit further too. And there's all sorts of ways people are doing this stuff now.
I mean, Yarmouth, didn't they go to form-based code for some of this stuff?
Pretty much, well, I don't know if they've actually gone to, but they mentioned a lot in their comprehensive plan.
What does that mean?
They did go to it.
Yeah.
I, I read the whole comp plan, Yarmouth one time.
Yeah, what is that?
I'd be way out of my skis if one...
Yeah, Cecilia can go into it. She's done more with it.
So it's interesting because the way that we have our design review ordinance, it's almost like we were trying to do form-based codes before its time. So like, pretty much the only reason why we got away with not having, in my opinion, got away with not having form-based codes is because we've had this design review ordinance for so long. But, so instead of like, the idea behind form-based codes is instead of regulating uses, we're gonna like have zoning that's more about regulating the buildings themselves. So we have, you know, like the bulk of the building, for instance, you know, having the certain breaks, it's basically regulating the shapes of the buildings and setbacks with minimum and maximums. You know, so that you get the look that you want without having a bunch of zoning or, you know, like on top of it. So it's more prescriptive and there could be, usually there's like a lot of drawings on it, so it's pretty straightforward. Good places to look at those are like Congress for New Urbanism and it's kind of, a lot of, you know, in, in the planning world, a lot of places are kind of transitioning to that because it seems like a better way of having your town developed is, you know, we care about how things look, not so much about how people are using the buildings.
Under form-based code, then if you have, say, one of our, you know, national retail stores wanted to become a dentist's office, as long as the building didn't change or as long as they kept the same windows in the front and the same whatever else, that, would they even need to go, I guess it could change, but I mean, but is that the idea is that like, as long as the building looks this way and is contributing in this visually to the character of the town, the use is secondary?
Yeah, pretty much.
So they prioritize aesthetics, really, and, you know, these are all shell building, you can, uses or whatever.
I got the, I was just talking to Yarmouth about it and it seemed like they still had kind of go around with developers, like ultimately on the design, which we do. The other thing that principal brought up during the visioning is kind of having, you know, these, the term is blanking from my mind, but, you know, these kind of pre-approved building designs that you incorporate that people like by right could.
Yeah, that's another thing too. So it's kind of like, we want development, we want development this way. So like if you come up with a set and like pat, patterns, you know, like some towns do that. And it's kind of like, instead of making you go through this whole approval, you build these kinds of buildings that we want as a community. And like, we'll just, you just come in basically for like your building code. So that's like something that some towns are experimenting with. Sometimes for like different things, like I know that in the, you know, one of the southern state had something like that for like ADUs, you know, so that like, it was one way of incentivizing that kind of like affordable housing. But it's a, it's a, I think, maybe a really good option for Freeport and then trying to do what we've been trying to do, but make it simpler to understand. And like the benefit of that is that there's no questions. It reduces some of that subjectivity, which is a criticism that we get for having. You know, and it adds these, it's a more like a visual code where you look at the pictures and it, and it, you know, it, it really focuses on like, you have a wall and we want, don't want all these break, you know, like we want breaks. You can't have, it has a lot of maximums in it so that you don't have like a long, you know, one hundred foot wall of a building and things like that.
I'd say the overlay district has some like hints of that. And I think when we sent out the RFP, there's a whole bunch of different ways you could do it. You know, you could do old-fashioned with some basic pictures. You could do design book. You could do a form-based code. I think we'll send out with what we want and then get the proposals back and see how the consultants are proposing to get us there. Because I haven't heard any, I think the outcome is our main goal, not...
I sort of remember coming out of the workshop, I mean, I don't think I'm fabricating this memory, but that, that one of the ideas was just replace the VC1 district existing zoning with form-based code.
Yeah, you could do that.
I don't know if that, if anybody actually likes that idea. But my, my memory is that that was one sort of like, this is a, you know, one way that we could...
If, as a town, everyone agrees, yes, this is the envision we have, right? If it's not, then, then there's, there's no flexibility, right? Like, oh, you're implementing this, you know?
Like the com, I think, you know, we could also be looking at this as an interim because we're doing the comp plan and there's certain values identified there.
Exactly.
Throwing away traditional zoning is totally fine, but it might be something that we need to align our comp plan with a little bit more.
Do you know the story of how the McDonald's came to be in Freeport and did they have to do that anywhere else?
I don't know if you Google it, there's articles like everywhere. Yeah, people were just talking about it.
I can't believe I have to take pictures of the McDonald's. I mean, you see all the time, stand outside.
Is it a McDonald's? Wow.
I moved in and New York Times was here. It was, it was a big event. It was amazing.
First time.
It was, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I know almost nothing about this, but somebody was telling me recently, it was the first time that McDonald's had given up whatever they're, yeah. They're like having the big golden arches outside or something.
Make them do that or?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, it was really controversial. Yeah, Google it.
When they came in?
Oh, when was that?
Were you on the planning board then?
It was all his fault.
There was no drive-through allowed.
No, no drive-through. That was a big fight.
That was a big fight, yeah.
Yeah, they couldn't have speakers there until fairly recently, actually.
So they're just sort of like eroding, they're chipping away.
You know, they're playing the long game.
And it was amazing about the fight over the, I was just amazed by the fight over the drive-through that, and now you, you looked at it, I mean, like, people would sit in line longer in the drive-through than if they just walked in and got their burger.
Exactly, exactly. Happens a lot, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of times, you know, that it's like spills out onto McDonald's.
And people were so mad.
It goes all the way down, up to Mellet.
You watch it, it just feeds all the way through.
And it's not always predictable. Sometimes it's like, alright, it's eleven o'clock.
Now the lobby's closed, now the lobby's closed because they can't get enough help. That's half the reason. The drive-through is only open.
Oh, okay.
That's why you see the advertising sign for help out front, because lots of times they don't have enough staff to open the lobby.
Definitely the world's best-looking drive-through then.
Because I'm, I hear people all the time, I don't understand why they can't open the lobby. It says, they don't have enough help to open the lobby.
Which of our ordinances prohibits golden arches?
It's a sign. I would say too, design review probably would not find it compatible, but the sign or, our sign ordinance is pretty...
Yeah, it was pretty strict.
And you can't have internally illuminated signs in the village. I think the last one we got was Key Bank.
Yeah.
Banana Republic wanted a palm tree out front.
They did, I didn't know that.
That got killed.
So, yeah.
Yeah, Alberg wanted a ski thing.
Retract my, my snide comment about the designer overlay district.
It was a big fight. The guy next, the guy that lived next door, he got in fights with the construction guys every day. Absor up there.
And Mrs. Gregg came in, Harrisika came in, just at the same time. So it was fascinating.
Poor old Mr. Cooper across the street, he didn't, didn't want the, didn't want the lights over there because every time they drove through, it was gonna shine right in his windows.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, were these people still living in the downtown? Like, oh, I smell hamburgers on, like, you know, and french fries.
That's right.
It was, it was quite a, it was quite an exercise.
It was amazing.
What happens when something moves in the town.
Yeah, that's really, yeah, that's interesting. Yeah, internally illuminated signs.
You don't get this in the rural district. I don't know what's going on.
If you move to town, Robert, it's...
I was gonna move that we proposed the height ordinances that they use in Manhattan. Would that, would that be a good idea?
That sounds like a fascinating public hearing.
Really? Definitely.
So, one of my beefs with all these ordinances, and I don't know how you fix it, is what if you don't want, you read through the, all these and talks about the buffers and the shrubs and all the planting, or if you don't want any?
I don't think you have to.
Um, like in the overlay district, you would. You have to have so many of, so many every certain distance, but...
What if you don't want them?
Route one south, Route one south, for example, there's a landscape requirement, but the board could approve grass.
But wasn't that more for the, to hide the commercial buildings? That was more for, to soften them up, yeah.
But, so, so I, I live down there by the hardware store. I own up against the hardware store. They made them plant trees, because it was a furniture store. They made them plant trees all up down Route one to hide the building, but they didn't buffer me as an abutter. And I've always complained like, well, why didn't I get the buffer and let the public see the building? That's the idea. But I have to look at the end of the building.
Maybe that's why it's front and side setbacks now, Andy.
Yeah, I think it is. I think, I think I complained about that, but it would be nice if, it would be nice if I had a choice of a buffer on my side, you know, as far as an abutter. Instead of just the one, and I always complain, you live on a commercial strip, why are you trying to hide a building in a commercial strip? You really want the building to be successful and people are driving by forty-five, fifty-five, sixty miles an hour if it's feeding. And, you know, they come to my house, turn around because they've missed the hardware store.
But they see your house.
Tear up my driveway because it's a big wide entrance and then go back to the hardware store. And it's like, you know, there must be some mix here of, in a commercial zone, how do you make sure the building is visible?
It's definitely tough. I mean, there's a lot of push right now for street trees everywhere, but you know, we've taken a lot of street trees out because exactly what you're saying, the commercial businesses don't like it because you can't see them and you can't...
Well, depends on what kind of street tree it is too.
I know.
Plant a roll pine trees or something inside the road, which is, you know, it's sort of silly. If we plant some nice rock maples out there, they grow into beautiful trees.
Design review...
I support that.
Yeah, me too.
Design review right now gets into site features. It's kind of vague. It doesn't really get into landscaping and prefer to keep it that way. If it's really just doing with aesthetics, because you have site, landscaping requirements in site plan.
Yeah, it's gonna be an interesting, and we don't have a huge amount of time to get this done either. I know a lot of it's gonna be outsourced, but...
Yeah, we're really gonna, we're gonna outsource it and be bringing, you know, bring it back. We'll have meetings. They'll check in with you guys, but...
What's going on with the comp plan?
Comp plan, the RFP is almost done. It's set up, I think I'm setting up so that they'll meet with you once a month.
Oh, good.
To do regular updates. I put a completion of eighteen to twenty-four months, which is pretty aggressive. And then, you know, we could meet more if needed. But I, what I see you do, once we hit the ground running with that, I see you regularly having the consultant do check-in and then we'll still be working on the housing stuff from the state, the design guidelines, the ordinance cleanup. So we'll be meeting pretty regularly with full agendas, I think.
We talk, do we talk about, is there gonna be a working group for the comp plan as well?
You guys.
That's it.
Yeah, I mean, you could break down, you could break it down into like working groups if you need to get certain things done.
But there won't be a comprehensive plan committee then?
No, that's why we created the planning board back in the day, so the planning board could take the lead. And so I think like if, like when you're talking about another, I'd bring in another committee. Yeah, you guys would lead the public process and then, you know, if we're talking about the environment, you'd invite the Conservation Commission and the Conservation Trust and...
Yeah, I just remember when we did the first plan, we had a separate comprehensive plan committee.
Yep.
But was there a PRB at that point?
I think there was.
No, the PRB didn't start till like two thousand and five.
It was some kind of planning board.
You had the planning board and then you had a design review and then you had the comp plan committee. The last comp plan was planning board.
Okay, because the first one, we had like twenty-two, twenty-three people on it.
Yep.
And then we submitted it.
Yep, no, you guys, and the way state laws, you guys are the authority for that. So you have to do the legal process and the public hearings.
Alright, anything else from anyone? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion, second? Sorry, I can't make the motion. All in favor? Alright, meeting is adjourned. All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.